When they let you down.
We are going live tonight, so it might like.
I haven't even opened it yet.
Cause I'm trying to like get through the.
You go to the ER. I sit on that, I sit on the board. We have to sign it.
I, I don't know what you're talking about, so. I'll.
There's a letter in there.
Okay.
Oh, here. I think I.
Well, I have it in mind, so I'll look.
Oh, okay.
If there was something that was really.
I don't know.
You know?
Yeah, I'll look.
Sure we did.
Okay.
I don't see anything that's.
It should be okay, I think.
You're, you, you are on it. You're on the list.
I'm on the list?
Yeah, Jerry's got another thing I'm gonna try in your yard too.
Okay, well, the neighbor that mows the grass in Hyming was asking a couple weeks ago. So, I'm like, well, the neighbors are kinda one and done too.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't let you know, but I just wouldn't mess up your vacation, you know?
Yeah.
Colorado looked pretty nice.
And it was, it was beautiful, yes.
But yeah, before they.
It was a long trip coming home, but.
Jerry's let me use his road tiller and a full box is like an aerator.
Alright.
So I figured by Thursday we're gonna be in your backyard to get it done.
Okay.
I'm gonna seat it, if you wanna put down straw, you're gonna have to get straw, but I'll throw seat down, okay?
Okay.
There you go.
Alright, I'll look at it. Billy, you look like you had a wonderful vacation too.
Did.
Yeah.
I did.
Yeah, you guys had some good pictures, I know.
I enjoyed the.
I didn't want to talk about it.
The only thing that grossed me out was the gum.
Yeah, that was, that was gross.
We are live.
We're live now, so.
Oh, we're.
Okay, well, the gum grossed me out.
I needed to see if we'd be able to.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, didn't wanna wait until the last bit.
Do we have to wait for this right? Like Craig's not gonna say, does he have to like wait till the meeting starts to be dismissed or just not show up?
Not a neat question.
That's what I was asking, I didn't wanna leave it. Do you wanna check six on the agenda?
Yeah. To make sure I, because, because my email, my phone, the board went ahead and said I haven't gotten your email until I find my password.
Hey, you know what?
But I wanted to make sure because if there was anything really, really.
Urgent, yeah.
Urgent.
That's all between you guys.
What?
You know our conversation about the guy who won the ball? What did he buy at the gas station? He's got a building where he sent out. A lot of room. Why are you so good?
I don't know, I think she knows more about it.
I knew that.
I don't know on the real detail. It looks like you had a good vacation.
I had an excellent one, yes.
Yes, you went with Brandon, right?
Brandon first and then George in Colorado.
Oh, wow.
He signed a card out here.
No, no, not, they didn't dig deep because of the gas.
Hi.
But, uh, yeah.
Good to have you.
Wait, you go to Michigan? He, he didn't have, he doesn't have his email, so he was on the agenda tonight, so he may have to scroll through, so.
He is, who took Rod's place, and he's just here to kinda listen to see what's going on with the town from our cap.
Oh, so he's here to our cap, okay.
Because when they dug it up.
What's your name?
TJ Whitehead.
Okay. I just wanted to give something on there, so.
Throw us a little bit.
Oh, thank you, I'm Melinda Joe.
You know, I'm very good.
Right.
I'm Brent.
Thanks for coming.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Remember, you were on our cap, you guys with your water.
They might go all in, uh, just do that.
He, Rod, Rod's another promotion, so he took his place, and he just kinda wanted to sit in and listen. Right on the top of town, he didn't have the other agenda, he just. Do you wanna kinda come in and listen?
Thank you for coming.
Oh, you're welcome.
Scheduling some of them before first crossing, we made. I made a bunch of heads with a couple of them, but yeah, see what we can do.
You guys are, we're live now.
Okay.
Just wanted to let you guys know.
Another word, be quiet, I guess.
Well, no, just, you know, you guys aren't used to being live, so.
Especially all night.
I might stay for the stretch.
Well, no, it was better to do that with the lady who had a talent and had a problem.
Crosswalks the Monon Trail. We're gonna make, make donations, so.
No, he didn't show me anything like that, any equipment, he left.
I just wanted to do the.
Oh, right?
Not mine, no.
Okay, that's true.
I've been practicing.
I have that information.
I know, I see it. I seen your test.
Or tests.
Yeah. Oh, oh, fifty-seven seconds?
Yeah, I did multiple ones, and I'm trying to go in there and like erase the test one, so currently I forgot one.
I did subscribe.
Did you?
So what is it, you? Him, and who else?
No, me, then you, and probably Vindi, I would say.
Oh, okay.
And I hope everybody knows that I mean to watch, they're gonna have to subscribe to YouTube, that's. That's all that, I mean, we're supposed to livestream, anybody that's watching, hopefully they know how to use YouTube.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go ahead and use the rest of it.
I'm surprised Jerry's not here yet.
Okay. She never.
And I saw Jerry earlier today, I'm sure he'll be here.
He was across, he was at the garage across the street from me, so he got messed around, so.
So were you guys gone for a whole week?
Yeah, we left Sunday, I think also.
Hmm, okay.
Really for a trip to Colorado, that's not very long. Going for.
We went to Alaska on the twenty, flew the twenty-second to Anchorage, and we did some land on our, we had a car rental.
They had a.
Uh, and then hopped on the cruise ship, and at the end of that, we took Amtrak to Seattle, and we just got back the second.
So you went from Amtrak to, where did you start?
We started in Anchorage, but we had a car rental, then went to Sioux.
Go on Amtrak.
Oh, well, our cruise ended in Vancouver, so we did the Amtrak Cascades down to Seattle for this beautiful train ride.
Okay, I went from Amtrak, well, Amtrak from Seattle to Chicago.
Oh, okay, I bet that was nice, right? Yeah, I used to have clients, you know, as a traveler, I'd just go off, think that, oh, well, we wanna do a train, train travel. Now, out to the west coast, but I don't realize how much those sleeper cars are, and like, you used to, you sat up.
It wasn't too bad, but I just ended the forty-four hour.
Can you imagine, there's no way I could do that, I can't sleep sitting up anyway.
Is it Brittany?
Brianna.
Brianna. Brianna, okay, so. I'm, I'm getting there, I'm getting close.
This is your fir- third council meeting in a row again, right?
Well, there's a Marvel family.
That's right. Real attended for today.
Hey, Jay.
Hi, babe.
Those are just copies of things I thought you might want in front of you, maybe.
It'll be fine.
I'm going to call the meeting to order, Tara, will you do roll call, please?
Frank Stettler?
Yes.
Jerry Bossitt? Walt Bennett? Melinda, well, he's here. Melinda Joe?
Yes.
Um, Craig Kudzinski.
Let's stand and do, uh, our pledge and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly fathers of the county this evening, we just ask that you be with us throughout this meeting and help us make the best decisions for the town of Kirkland. And help us return safely to our homes, in your name we pray, amen. In our packets, we have, um, meeting minutes from May twelfth and May nineteenth. Would anybody entertain a motion? If these are okay to approve or if there's any corrections?
Make a motion.
To approve them? Okay.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Um, on our new business, Kimberly Duff is here, um, and I also have, um, Dwayne Hisher here, um, from Kirkland Main Street. So Kimberly, if you wanna come up to the podium? And if you wanna ask your questions, Dwayne and, Dwayne will try to help you on some of the questions you might ask.
I'm on trail first.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Um, how much is needed for, like the voluntary aid?
Well, that, that's a, uh, why not? I got some handouts here that I will, basically, we've started doing a quarterly donor report, and maybe I can, then they help answer a couple of the questions. Starting the start of the year, we've started doing a donor report that we send out to our major donors to the project thus far. Uh, they, it is still draft, uh, and just let me quickly explain why it's draft. We're still trying to, uh, determine if you go to the, if you go to the, let's go to report number one. Page three, the, page four, exhibit, page three, the exhibit A. I think this'll part, answer your questions, your first question. The pop column in there says prior to twelve thirty-one twenty-four, we're still trying to get, I'm still trying to get all that information. There was some minor income donations and some expenses that were paid, we're trying to get that determined, so we have this correct going forward, that's why it's still in draft form. The first quarter numbers are accurate, and so to answer your question, uh, so far, uh, we have, uh, cash income to date, uh, of a hundred twelve thousand five hundred donations. That is slightly understated because we do have individual donations of probably ten to twenty thousand prior to twelve thirty-one twenty-four, that's the one I'm trying to still, uh, get my, get the information on. We've got another, I believe it's sixty-five thousand dollars pledged, uh, from the Clint County Community Foundation. Uh, they are, they don't wanna release the money until this, this report's done, so, uh, we have a draft version, so once we issue the final version, I think that money will come in. And then corporate donations, the Farmers Bank has pledged another twelve thousand five hundred dollars there. So, uh, we will be getting close to, by the time you get all that in, two hundred thousand dollars or so in cash contributions from individuals and various, uh, entities in the community. Then we have, uh, some land that has been donated to us, we are working on getting that land surveyed right now, the survey should, should be done anytime field work has been done. At which time we will engage, uh, Jay Moore to prepare the deeds, we had some landowners that agreed, uh, a couple of years ago to, uh, deed us over about, uh, I'd have to get the, well, if you go to. If I can answer this question, if you go to page exhibit D. There's a list of the landowners there that have agreed to donate land and the size of their, their tract that they are, uh, that they've agreed to donate. We're working on getting that surveyed off, so that we can get the legal description to Jay, so he can prepare the quitclaim deed, and also so we get the title insurance. But basically, if you go to exhibit E. The last page, this is the proposed, what we call phase one of the Monon Trail. It starts at State Road thirty-eight where the Monon, east of Kirkland where the Monon Trail, uh, crosses State Road thirty-eight. And it's this vision to go all right along the old Monon Trail, the old Monon rail line, all the way to Travelers Point Distillery on Madison Street. That's phase one, it's a little bit over half a mile, uh, and so we've estimated, our most recent estimate on the project cost going back to exhibit A. Is six hundred and ten thousand dollars to, uh, complete phase one. And so, uh, we've got about, uh, a couple hundred thousand dollars of that, uh, in grants, in, uh, donations. And then we'll be applying for additional grants as we go forward. I'm not the grant expert, but it's my understanding that typically, uh, we've gotta have about twenty percent matching funds for any grant money. So, it was a million dollar project, you gotta come up with two hundred thousand dollars, and so, uh, we should, we will probably have enough money on hand for matching funds for phase one. And then, once phase one is done, we will turn our attention towards phase two, uh, which it, basically, we'll get the Monon Trail from Travelers Point Distillery on Madison Street. Uh, there's still some discussion, we want feedback from the community, we want feedback from our members, we want feedback from our engineering firm. But, right now, the, the idea is to get the trail, the Monon Trail, to, uh, the. Library crossing the, uh, the water tower there, uh, for the trailhead. Uh, and that would be the conclusion at this time of the, that'd be phase two, conclusion phase two of the Monon Trail, so go from the water tower, you go from the water tower all the way out to thirty, State Road thirty-eight. Uh, the reason for that path is we're wanting it to come here through, uh, so that the merchants downtown benefit from that. There is some talk about taking it down Madison Street, that gets a little bit congested, we think might be easier now to take it down Jefferson Street. We're still talking through that, that has yet to be determined. And then there's a long-term plan, well, long-term, there is a group working, we're told, to connect Kokomo to, uh, Frankfurt via that line. We then hope to run up, uh, four twenty-one, or wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, Kirk would be Clint County, but we would have Clint County position that they could run up four twenty-one, tie into that, to Michinatown. And then also, we're strategically, why we're putting out there at thirty-eight, is then we are in the process of having some, we've already had some discussions with Boone County. About, uh, the feasibility of how to go about tying in, shared, which is to the Boone County line. Clint County will essentially be the Boone County line with what we're doing, tying in Boone County. And there's some challenge, unique challenges in Boone County, in that they don't have any setback rights either on State Road thirty, even rights, on either thirty-eight or any of the county roads. So it becomes a little more, they've got, but, but, uh, I was at a meeting with them where they spoke, they are in favor rails to trails, uh, they, so, uh, you know, it's, it's a longer term project, certainly. But that's the overall vision, is to have Kirkland be tied in with the overall Monon Trail line that starts, I think, down to Indianapolis. And then it's all ready to share, we get through Boone County, we can come to Kirkland, and then if that trail line from Kokomo to Frankfurt should get done at some point in time. We could hopefully go up there, that's a theoretically a little bit easier process because, uh, their indot has, uh, about, I forget, seventy-five foot setback rights on each side of State Road four twenty-one and Michinatown. So there are easement rights there that make that process, at least theoretically, a little bit easier, we wanna go that way.
When, when do you think phase one will be done?
We, we don't know, uh, we, we will start, uh, soon as, as soon as the survey is done. We will immediately tend to get the land deeded to Kirkland Main Street, so we actually own it. At that time, we will do signage, we're gonna do, definitely this fall, we're gonna do, uh, clearing, brush clearing, and excavation work. Uh, and we will go until the money runs out, so, the process will be getting the survey done, getting the deeds done, deeds and title work. Then doing the brush clearing, which if you look here, we had a brush clearing budget of sixty thousand dollars, that was what one bit had on that, I don't know. That may not, may or may not be the final number, but you can kinda see all the, uh, costs we got through here, so we will go through that order of things, uh, until we run out of money. And then we will continue to be applying for grants, both, uh, next level grants and, uh, any grants that we can apply to to try and finish the project. Uh, so that's the goal right now, uh, we are hopeful that maybe we could get all the way through most of the stone down. I don't think there's any way we'll have enough to get the asphalt down, most likely, but at least get the stone down, get the land deeded to us. It's a little unique, and then if you look at what Sheridan did. And most of the other rails, Monon, when they got the Monon line, they got the Monon line, so it's a nice flat bed. We got half of Monon line extending into the farmer's fields when this is all done, so there's a lot more grading work that has to be done, we don't have a flat top to work with, we have a slope to work with. So there's gonna be some additional grading work to do that. Uh, so that's an extra expense that, uh, maybe, say the town of Sheridan or somebody else didn't have, but that's, uh, uh, but. Once we get this done, then we'll start moving forward, but we do have, uh, I wouldn't say the numbers here have actually been a formal bid, we've had one contractor, contractor come out and look at the site, he drove it with us, and out of the, uh, John Smith. And agreed to give us just a preliminary cost estimate, it's not a formal bid, but so we had a working numbers to start with, because we didn't even have that till here, within the last sixty, ninety days. So that is the process we're working on, uh, so, um, like I said, we to- think the cash expense will be about five hundred thousand dollars. Land donations right now, we've estimated a hundred and ten thousand dollars of value, we're actually gonna have that appraised. Uh, I suspect it might come in higher than that, possibly come in lower, that's our best guess that we've used to work on grants to this point in time, but once it's, that land is deeded to us. We have a contractual obligation to our donors to have the land appraised for their tax purposes, so we will get that formally appraised at that point in time, this is just a best guess. Yeah.
I'm just excited about it, and I know what was going on.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
So we've got, we've had good support from the community in Clint County, from the community foundation, uh, from some corporate donors and some individual donors, so, um. Like I said, we get this started, we're hoping that will put us on the map, be connected to these other places and really benefit the town of Kirkland in the, in the long term.
Alright, thank you.
Dwayne, were you gonna like, like, finish the trail to the park at all, or are you just gonna just head down?
I think right, we, we, we've, that's been, that's not to be determined, I think right now, there was a phase three to take it from the, um, uh, water tower to the park. We've kinda backed off a little bit on that thinking. That could, to see what happens with Michinatown, because it just may make more sense to.
Just go, yeah, Michigan.
Go, go up Michigan Road, as opposed to getting to the park and back to Michigan Road.
Right.
Would make that trail kinda superfluous in some respects.
Right.
So, uh, that, that is phase three, if we do it, I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But, obviously, the Clint County will be responsible for doing, if they, if they are interested in doing a lot of that, because it's gonna be outside the jurisdiction of town of Kirkland, once we get to roughly Dollar General or something, so.
So the train track at Michinatown will be converted into the trail?
That's the long, that's the vision, it will go from Kokomo to Frankfurt through the, uh, town of Michinatown. If you wanna really grand vision, then you can connect Frankfurt to Colfax, and then you got a huge loop of the Monon Trail that goes all the way down to Zionsville, back to Carmel and everything, so. Um, Clint County's kinda right in the middle of, if they elect to go forward with putting this whole northern stretch together, this northern loop together, if you will. And we're just trying to make sure that it doesn't go around us, it goes through us, if and when that becomes reality.
Okay.
So, that's kinda where we're at right now.
Thank you.
So, but the definite goal is to begin at least clearing land this fall. But again, do we think that we get it deeded to us, we're kinda in limbo.
Okay.
Um, my second issue, I know this isn't, um, really a Kirkland, like isn't your job, but I thought maybe on behalf of the town, um. On Jefferson and Perry, that curve around where the crosswalk is. Whenever I'm walking with my son in the stroller, like, two times in one week I almost got hit by someone speeding around there, because it's so hard to see around that corner, especially when you're walking, it changes so fast. Um, so like, Michinatown, they have those, I don't know if we can do that here. Um, especially with like Sheridan and that big project that's coming, and then I tell him, I have a multi-million dollar forty-seven project coming, I just feel like there's gonna be a lot of traffic. Um, and I would say like sixty percent of the time that we, that we work from home, that we travel outside of Kirkland is to go to a trail, so I wanted to know about that, but I just feel like. It's an issue, and I have, um, I live on West Madison, and we have, uh, a ring, and I have footage of, don't play the audio, my husband is not this awful, but. Of, um, a semi keeps, they keep hitting that stop sign at the stoplight. So I think we, if we could move the stoplight down one, down here, because I think semis are trying to turn left at the light to avoid, and they almost hit cars.
That's the state, there's, we can't, the town of Kirkland can't do anything with our stoplight.
Well, I just meant, like, maybe make your request on the.
I believe that you guys have in the past.
We have asked.
And they've done counts, like vehicle counts, and said there's just not enough. I don't know how many, it's been a few years since you guys did it, but I know, I'm pretty sure you guys have done it.
You've asked if I would be moved before, too.
I don't know if, I, um.
But I agree.
If you want the footage, it's like, I've only lived here three years, and I can tell sometimes they get like six or seven times, it's crazy.
Billy probably knows too, because he has to fix them. Or repair.
And it's really short now, too, it's, it gets hit a lot, but that was within the past month, I think.
You know, truly, that's been talked about over and over and over. The stoplights should be out here, that's two state highways.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm nervous to let my kids play outside, I think.
I brought it up thirty-some years ago, and the guy from the state said we operate off statistics.
And that's why they did the car count.
So they haven't had enough car wrecks or enough people killed there, or whatever.
Another problem is whenever Booker's is busy, and it's not her fault, that's not what I'm saying, I'm just saying, there's parking spots that are too close to this down here, and I have an SUV. But when there's another SUV parked up next to, like, the curb or a truck, you can't see, you have to like pull way out.
Pull clear out into the street to see.
I mean, I'm willing to make the request myself, I just thought it might be actually done, you guys did it. But that's all I got.
I think everybody in this room would probably support that, getting them to do it.
Do you want me to?
Go for it.
Write something, or?
Absolutely, and if anything. Leave both lights, put a new one here, or remove that one. Most of the business is here, it'd be nice to have a light here for people to cross and such.
Or even if we could put like a no truck sign right there to, because they're trying to get over here, is the point, um, it's just really dangerous over there.
I don't know, but it helped with one of you guys maybe called, or, or a letter?
Okay, I mean, I can, I can try it, I can contact indot, but. I might wanna go back and look and see when we did it last.
Okay.
I remember it being done, I just don't remember what year it was, I was on the council, I just don't remember what year it was.
Start position.
I, I mean.
We talked a hundred years ago when, when we were in the old town hall next year.
We've talked, we've asked, we've done a study before recently, I don't remember what year it was, but I'll, I'll check on that.
The last time that a stoplight was requested, requested here at four twenty-one thirty-eight was right when the engineers, uh, indot's engineers were planning the redo of Highway thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
From city limits to city limits.
Okay.
I met with the, their engineers, and, uh, seeing as how indot would not move a red light from Madison four twenty-one to thirty-eight four twenty-one. I requested for them to do a study or consider the possibility of putting a, uh, let's say a caution red light. Um, with, uh, crosswalk buttons on either side of the highway. That, uh, you know, if you wanted to walk across the highway, they could push the button, and in a timely manner, it would become a red light, and then you could cross the road. But, uh, when there's nobody crossing the road, it would just be a blinking caution light. Uh, they told me that there was, uh, no plans and no money for that, uh, and they weren't even considering it.
I knew we'd recently done, I just don't remember when we had talked about it, so.
I know the sheriff in Boone County, what, two, three years ago, when there was, he fought it, fought it, and finally got a stoplight put in at forty-seven and fifty-two. When I was a little kid, I wondered why they didn't have a stoplight there, they was, it wrecked after wrecked after wrecked there, all them years. And he got involved with the news media, and there's a stoplight there now, I don't know what buttons he pushed to get it done, but. It should, I agree, it should, there should be one here. Yeah, and if traffic out there parked at all, you gotta pull clear out in the street to look.
So that's not waiting to happen.
I can still try, I can still try to send a letter, I just don't know, I can let you know what I find out from it.
I mean, if they wanna do a new study, I think, um.
The one that, one that was the bank.
No, no, that was another one.
It's a good idea.
Headed next May, it's gonna be open, so. That's all I have, though.
You have a great idea.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next, um, new business is Kirk's Crossing in Shane. Oh, thanks, Sharon.
I'm here on behalf of Kirk's Crossing Festival. I hope you guys have in your packet our tentative plans for the weekend scheduled for June twenty-sixth, twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-five. We'll kick off Thursday with the fire department fish fry like we do every year. Well, we'll do this again Friday evening, all day Saturday. We'll finish up Sunday with our community church service. Something new this year we're going to try is a first annual motorcycle ride. So it'll be across the county. So we're working with the sheriff's office. We're going to put that on Sunday afternoon after the church service. A lot of the same events coming back this year. We have band book Friday and Saturday night, five K Saturday morning, parades at noon on Saturday. Um, we'd really like to help in presence of the fire department EMS police that weekend. Um, so Brendan, you have some guys that might be interested in helping out. Definitely appreciate your help. Do what?
Yeah, I've got them all scheduled.
Perfect. So yeah, we have five K in the morning, parade at noon, a lot of fun. Kids activities in the afternoon, bounce houses and play balls, axe throwing, things like that, all happening down at the park. We hope everybody could come and visit. Um, one other note, if anyone's interested in helping with Kirk's Crossing Committee, reach out to our Facebook page or contact Tommy at Eli at Hotmail dot com if you're interested in helping and we'll be happy to get you guys involved. Any questions from council for Kirk's Crossing Committee?
When is the axe throwing?
It is Saturday afternoon, two to seven, kids and play balls, axe throwing.
Oh, I see that.
Yep. So this is the same tip. We're hoping to publish it later this week.
Yeah, that's what I wrote.
Finalize a couple of things. I'm just waiting on some vendors to confirm that they're going to be here.
Before you guys finalize it, yeah, that's a good idea.
So are you having the horse pull and tractor pull?
Yep, horse pull and tractor pull. Yep.
All right. And when, when do you plan on starting on the track?
It should be here in the next week or two. So we've worked up a way to get the track repositioned up along the propping line, um, with Metzinger. So it's going to be tucked out of the way, um, be, be north of the new walking path back there. Um, so the walking path will be used for a spectator to come into the pool or reach over again and, or seating.
Is there enough space there for the?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
For the pole thing?
Yeah, between, between the walking track and the concrete barrier, there's plenty of room and plenty of length for the
For the pole, okay.
Tractor pull.
Right about one or thirty feet from the Hiber Hawk building and then it's going to go, um, west.
West, okay.
But now the horse pull will have to be on the old track uh, because the condition of the ground has to be different. Uh, but then next year it will both be on the same track.
Okay.
And also I'm collecting yard sales. So if anybody's having a yard sale and I put it on Facebook and making up a flyer like I did last year, that seemed to go over well. You just need dates and times and just a very short description of the items and I will distribute the flyer then.
Anything else for me?
Thank you though.
Can you answer?
You guys got any questions or? Okay. We're good. Thank you for coming in.
Yep, no problem.
Bring us through.
Happy to be here.
Okay. We're going to, um, old business. We're going to start with our sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. It looks like we have an invoice in our packet. If you guys have any questions or if you guys approve it, if you could entertain a motion, if you approve the invoice.
I make a motion that we improve paying Commonwealth Engineers an amount of nineteen thousand one hundred nine dollars for eliminated design and bidding and filtering.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Our next item is, um, the park.
Oh, let's see. We, uh, of course you know, we're, we're doing the cap and lid donation program and it's, it's worked out very, very well. Uh, we've got enough caps and donations to, uh, uh, they'll get six more benches whenever we can have time to leave town. Uh, but we've got six assembled and ready to go. Uh, Metzinger, um, has already done the prep work uh, for, uh, pouring the concrete slab that the park benches will sit on. Um, and then when he gets the concrete poured, it will be an eye bowl and then the benches will all be chained to those pads so that they can't be removed. Uh, and he will be, uh, pouring concrete first thing in the morning. Uh, so we'll have, uh, most of them at the playground area and then we'll have one or two in the, on the walking track itself. Uh, but I want to give a big shout out to Brent and Metzinger Construction um, because, uh, he has donated all the time, labor and materials to do this. Uh, and it was a, it would have been a pretty costly expense for the park and he graciously volunteered to donate every bit of it.
That's very nice of you, Metzinger, to do that, donate all that concrete. That's expensive too.
He and I have had discussions. Uh, we've got some other projects in the works, uh, later on in the park and he basically told me just, you know, to get with him whenever, uh, I need his assistance or his crew to do something and, and we'll, you know, take it care of. So, uh, he's been a great help. But the benches will be installed before Kirk's Crossing.
The six of them, the first six.
There's the six and then the other six will be done probably sometime first of July.
Um, was Jones Electric working on any of the electrical at the shelter house area?
Yeah, Jones Electric has been going through all, everything. Uh, but I think Kirk's Crossing handled all of that. So.
They checked early over for the weekend.
Okay. I saw them there Friday. That's why I was asking. So.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll have, uh, we'll have a, a fresh layer of mulch around the playground area. Um, John McIntyre with Dirty Hands Landscaping has helped out quite a bit keeping the weeds and stuff sprayed and control around the pickleball, the basketball courts and also, uh, all the mulch areas. So he's been a great help as well.
How many benches do we need altogether?
I'm looking right now, uh, I would like to get two more to have a total of fourteen. And then from there, uh, we are going to start collecting for trash receptacles uh, made out of the same material, all, uh, outdoor receptacles, all matching. Uh, that way we can distribute them around the park and maybe put one or two around the pickleball and the basketball court. Uh, and then once those are done, uh, then we are going to start putting together a kiddie park and getting little kiddie picnic tables and kiddie sized benches. Uh, and hopefully, uh, we can get that done. I mean, it's, it's going to take a while, but I'd, I'd like to get that done within the next couple of years. Uh, also, I am working on, uh, getting donations uh, to have the backstops at the park replaced. Uh, right now I've, I've, I've gotten some. Uh, but I really haven't had a whole lot of time to reach out to certain ones. Uh, but, um, hopefully, hopefully by the end of the year, I can have enough donations for the town that we can replace the backstops at, on both fields. And that's all I've got for the park.
Okay. Can we move on to the utility superintendent information?
Uh, everything that I, um, hopefully you've had a chance to go over what I have, uh, given you. Uh, if you have any questions, please feel free to do so. Um, there was, uh, some electrical issues at the wastewater plant. I had Jones Electric come in this morning and go through some stuff. Uh, we ended up, uh, changing some breakers. Uh, and, uh, when he went to investigating the issues, I've got to have a new refrigerator, uh, for my samples at, uh, the wastewater plant. And the transformer that operates the auger screen, uh, at the front of the building, uh, is going to have to be replaced. Um, so there's still, still a couple more issues. The, the, the heating oven for some of my samples went out today. We found out that the switch went bad. So, uh, it's an old heater. So we're going to, I mean, it's an old oven. Uh, so we're going to see if we can't round up a part that will actually work. Uh, if we can't find a part, we, a part for, uh, the oven, uh, then that will be several thousands of dollars to replace that. Um, but hopefully we can get a part. But, uh, we're doing a part location now. So we're, we're just trying to get everything, uh, together to get all of that done. Um, so we're relying on Adams. West Adams was completed. He's still got quite a bit of dirt work and some more concrete to pour. Uh, we've got some, uh, storm drains that we will be replacing on West Clay and North Perry and also West Washington. Um, and hopefully we can get some of that scheduled and done, um, before Kirk's Crossing. Um, I've got two. I meet with him in the morning when he comes into town because if he does the one on West Clay and North Perry, I want it completely done, dressed and the concrete poured and the street open, uh, before Kirk's Crossing is done. And if he can't guarantee that, then he will have to do that afterwards and then just work on the, on West Washington. So in the net, that's all I've got.
Okay. Brendan, we're ready for your items. Brendan Marshall.
Um, just to touch on Shane's comment, yeah, I've got staffing similar to what you've had in your past. I've talked to the guys for, um, getting some schedules rearranged and stuff and we'll have police staff for the Kirk Crossing this year. Um, as far as our activity for the, since our last meeting, we've had twenty-seven calls for service, uh, nine ordinance violations, warnings, two misdemeanor arrests, twenty-two traffic stops. And out of that, we've had, uh, four infractions that were written and seventeen warnings on those traffic stops. And that's all I really had. Not much else to report.
Um, the only thing that has kind of been brought to, um, the town's attention, um, if the officers are working and they would happen to see golf carts out, would they be able to check to see if those have been updated, their permits on them and?
They sure can.
Okay.
I would assume a lot of them haven't because we haven't done too many.
Right. That's what, that's what, we haven't done any. That's why Tara was thinking. We've seen them out, but we don't know that people's actually done it. So.
I would give one maybe, but not ever. But yeah.
Okay. That's all I had on, on that.
Ready to move on?
Yep. We're ready to move on to, uh, Kirk treasure.
All right. You guys have your revenue report. You have your recreation report. Uh, here is the billing adjustment register. You guys to sign. Here's your balance docket and your AP docket. I'm sure I signed that yes. Maybe if you're just filming, it's going to be wrong. And while you guys are doing that, um, the landscaping out here that Platinum did last year, um, there's bushes out there and I'm sorry, I don't remember what John called them, but if you look out there, they're dead. And so John is doing a really good job this year on landscaping. Uh, he's always up here like looking to see if there's like any weeds that need pulled or whatnot. I feel like he really knows his stuff, but, um, he has submitted, you guys have a copy of it, I think, in your, did I give you guys a copy? Yes, that, a quote to replace, oh, there we go, there are ligalia bushes um, with something called ivory halo dogwood bushes in place of them. And so that's, I told him he got a quote in that I would present it to you guys for you guys to decide what you want to do.
We need three quotes.
Is this in addition to like his proposal then?
Like, yeah, because I mean, I don't know if you guys have been to a nursery and he gives them a, you know, some discount, but I mean, that stuff's not cheap. He says he likes to use those for this kind of landscaping. I don't know any much, a whole, whole lot about plants. Maybe you guys do.
What?
No, I'm, I'm okay with the, uh, with this quote.
How much is it? That would determine whether you need to bid it or not.
Five hundred dollars.
It's only five hundred for materials and labor.
Yeah, small. Yeah.
And we make a motion?
Yeah, if you want to entertain a motion. Yeah, that's perfect.
I make a motion that we have Dirty Hands Landscaping, uh, remove the dead bushes and install them with the new bushes for five hundred dollars, which includes all materials, labor and disposal. I'm sorry.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries on the.
I'll, I'll let John know tomorrow.
He could even be watching.
And then you have, um, Eco Infrastructure, um, for a main break that they just sent in the, isn't this the one that we just got, Billy?
Yeah, the, what, the twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five?
Yeah, they are, they tend to, they're, uh, I think that they let their guys do their own invoices and then one other person has to approve them. So this is actually back from February and we just now received it. So. And it was after you guys, it was after the, um, packets were done. So.
I make a motion to approve the invoice for twenty-five hundred and twenty dollars to Eco Infrastructure Solutions.
I'm sorry, I got that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
And then the rest of these are adjustments for you guys to look at. You have copies of all of them. And Carla has, um, hopefully you guys got your packets early enough to be able to look at all of those. This is probably the most that we've had since I started here years ago. There's one, two, three, four. There's five of them in one meeting. So. And it's too bad Craig didn't stay because he probably could have spoken on the ticket all them.
On that one?
Yeah. Apparently she wrote on twelve twenty-four, the first door hanger was set. Because when she, you know, you guys know how, they'll know how they work. Whenever our system senses a leak, it has to be, they've had to have ten gallons per hour going through their meter for a twenty-four hour period between midnight and midnight. And then we get alerts that there's something going on. So that's when she sends the first door hanger. Um, it was a renter named Elizabeth Burge that lived downtown here. And then on one twenty-nine, the second door hanger was sent. We send a second one. If we don't get any response and they're still leaking and they haven't called us or anything, she'll go ahead and send a second one, um, send it to the apartment. And she then texted the owner, which is the man's, because she texted Sam. She said Sam contacted me the same day and told me she would send maintenance meeting Craig. Um, two seventeen, she asked to check if the leak was still there. Carla told her, yes. She said she was sending the maintenance guy again to check. Two nineteen, she asked me again if I could check whether the water leak was still showing in the system and it was. By two twenty-four, it was fixed. So it took two months from the first notification for it to be fixed. Um, and she, she mailed her the sewer adjustment form on February the nineteenth and she just received it back at sometime mid-May.
And that's why we have the February and March both on there.
Right. Because she didn't know if you guys would approve just the first month since they were aware of it or if you would do both. And I wish that Craig could have spoken more. And I wish Craig could have spoken more on it because he would have been the one that they called to go fix it the first time. So I don't know if they didn't call him really the first time or if he tried to fix it and he just didn't fix it. So it's hard for me to say, I wasn't part of the conversation and Craig isn't here, so. But, you know, it's been since February and if they would get an adjustment, it would be based on the old water rates because the new water rates didn't start till April first. So the adjustment would go on the old water rates, 'cause that's what they would have been charged. So it's up to you, you wanna talk to Craig first or if you wanna approve something.
What do you guys think about this last water leak that Tara was talking about? I'm, I'm okay with the adjustments, I was just, you know, wondering about the other. They're pretty standard.
They're pretty standard, yes. You know, you know, for like the Lothespers, when they do a pool fill, that's only the sewer that's adjusted.
Right.
If they fill it May twenty-fourth or before. If it's after May twenty-fourth, they're, right now, we're already gonna be on summer springing rates and so our system automatically adjusts it based on their average. The, the only thing I would have to say is, and I wish Craig was here, again, I wish he was here, is when she sent the first door hanger, you know, we send it to whoever lives there, you know. It's their responsibility to call their landlord and say, hey, there's a leak, you need to get it fixed. Whether Elizabeth Burge did or not, who knows?
What's the address of this?
Um, it should be.
One oh one South Main.
It's on the adjustment.
It's one of the apartments.
Oh, okay.
And I can't think of which one it is up here. Is it the one on the co- no, it's not on the one on the corner, is it?
I'm not sure which one it is either.
Me either.
Well, that would be a tough one, there's, there's upstairs apartments there as well, ain't there? And there.
There's multiple.
There's, there's the steps that's on the sidewalk that goes up and then straight up, right?
That's been an issue.
But that's, uh.
Yeah. There's like, is there like three apartments up there or?
Yeah.
They each should have their own meter.
Right.
Um, because, and I've, I've said this before, and, you know, every, all of us have a minimum bill, but when there's businesses and apartment sharing, first of all, it's been a, I used to have trouble with this one in particular. They were supposed to be splitting it, it was only in one of their name. They would argue, well, I'm not gonna pay my half, they don't pay their half. I say, I don't care who's that pays the bill. It's in one of your names, that's the person responsible. If it doesn't get paid, someone gets shut off, you guys are gonna have to fight it out. The town is losing money and it's not fair to all the other residents for two or three people to be on one meter and not each have to have the minimum like every other resident out here has. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Um, you know, and I have nothing against anybody downtown, but I just see it's very unfair to our customers that there could be more than one. And if you guys look in our ordinances, it's been there for years. I think Billy has found it before, that they're supposed to be split. But only you guys can, you know, force it, I can't.
Okay.
Do you know what that ordinance says, Billy? I, I was just talking about the unfairness, that everybody else has a minimum bill and it's not, you know, I don't think it's right that some people get off the hook or through no fault of their own of being connected to a business and/or another apartment. And I'm not trying to charge, to cause trouble for anybody, I'm just all about fairness. Very black and white about fairness, you know?
I'm either wanting to table this last one till next month or I wanna just approve one month. I don't know the answer of if he was sent to the wrong apartment or if there was an issue that kept reoccurring, it was something else.
Or if he wasn't truly contacted.
Yeah, that's why I don't really know.
If it was fixed and he didn't realize that it wasn't fixed.
Right, so I don't really know how to answer this last.
And you know, I mean. It happened back in February and here it is June and they just now turned it in. So that's up to you guys, but, you, you know, I would say err on the side of caution is having more info than just taking a stab at it so that you make the right decision.
Has the bill been paid up or, or is it still being?
I would have to look because when you have a leak, you still have to keep your bill up.
Okay.
Um.
All right.
Because an adjustment request is just that, a request.
Okay.
So, you know, they don't know if it's gonna be approved or not.
Well, this just says it was a toilet running, then it doesn't hurt to fix.
It's not that hard to know either.
No, but this, you've got multiple units on this same bill.
Yeah.
Right. Do you know which apartment that is?
All around the building, they just straightened that out.
One oh one, South Main, who they're connected to? I don't think it's this corner, I think it's across on South Madison.
It's, it's right behind.
It's Fireside.
Yeah, it's right behind Fireside. Um, on, on that si- on that single meter, you've got Fireside and three apartments.
On one meter?
On one meter.
That's what I was thinking. But there's other cases of, that's the one with the most, but isn't, I know of one that has three on it. Um, down here where the doctor was, it's where Cornerstone was or Document Mountain upstairs. And is it Craig and Tina's building connected to that one?
Yeah, the new coffee shop, the doctor's office and the, uh, business upstairs, that's all on one meter as well.
And then where the toy store store is upstairs and the one apartment in back.
The gift shop, um, the liquor store and apartment in the back and Jen's apartment. Okay, well, it's the gift shop.
They have their own bill.
Uh, there's three there.
There's an apartment where Taryn, you know Taryn Moran, she lives behind.
Yes.
And then where Jen's daughter lives and then the toy store.
Yeah.
That's, that's one meter, so, you know, and I know Billy's mentioned it before too and it was before everything went treasure, what was your answer? Haven't you guys brought it up before?
Well, when we did the water project in twenty nineteen, I went to, uh, Chip and Dan and, uh, told them, uh, that I was gonna set meter setters and all that stuff, uh, so that they could be, you know, able to split it up. And they said, once that was all done, that they would take care of it and split it all up, but they haven't done anything.
Okay.
Is there some, Jay, is there some way that we can force the, you know, property owners to?
I'd have to read what our, our current ordinance says. But, yeah, I mean, I think you can require.
Split them up?
Separate meters.
Okay.
Now, that, that, that there's, there may be some, uh, you know, additional expense for the, for the town because you'll maybe have to buy some more meters.
Do you, do you have, do you have extra meters for when you switch them out?
Yeah, and, I mean, there, there's gonna be an expense on our, our side, but, um.
It is something we would provide to anybody that came up with a new meter. I mean, we would have to my way.
Okay.
I'd have to look at it, but it, it, you know.
Each, well, I mean, actually, um, and it's possible that the landowner, property owner, whatever, will have to, uh, foot the bill for it. Um, and, and in that case, uh, every water cap is charged at cost. So whatever it costs us, the property owner will have to pay for it.
So it's not gonna be a popular opinion with whoever owns the buildings. Um, but.
It's not fair for Sunshine Manor apartments.
It's not fair for, and Shane, it's not, you know. Wouldn't you guys like to split your bill three ways to someone? And that's what I'm seeing, is it's not.
You've got, there's, there's multiple, multiple cases of that. Where the old coffee shop was, you've got the old coffee shop, Bob's Fitness and then Dr. Chuck's apartment. That's all on one meter.
Yes.
Um, the, the corner, the bakery, uh, the apartment upstairs and then, uh, the hairdresser or the beauty shop or whatever behind you, that's all on one meter. And then you've got the nail salon and the boutique, the lady made boutique, that was all on one meter. Uh, and we just ran into that and I'm getting, we're getting that, uh, rectified is where the new tasting room is going in, was actually sharing a water line with Booker's banquet room.
But they're splitting it.
And we're, we're, yeah, I'm, we're getting that taken care of, so we're, uh, there's two meter setters in that pit, so we're, we're splitting that, so that'll be two separate accounts.
But they had to put in the money.
But they had to put in the money to do that.
I mean, Sunshine Manor, correct, has all individual meters in their apartments, right?
Yeah, there's every apartment, even the office, has separate meters.
Correct, okay. Okay, we need to get this addressed then.
Do you want me to put it on another agenda or you just wanna let me know?
Um, I think Jay's gonna like look at our ordinance.
I'll review the ordinance.
And see.
Okay, you guys let me know.
Okay. Um, I wanna make a motion that we approve all of the leak adjustments, but table the one from Teagan Olem till next month to try to get some more answers on that.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries. And.
Let me see if I have anything else.
Okay, I'll double check before you move on.
I do not, I just wanna make sure I didn't stick anything in here at the last minute. Sometimes things come in on Fridays or Mondays after you guys pick the packets and.
Um, just the last thing I wanted to just to bring up, um, I wanted to kinda like talk about the, the meeting guidelines, just to try to keep things to point and professional. And I didn't know if you guys had any comments that I had given you guys the last time from last meeting or if you wanted, if you had any input on that. It was like, it was like the guidelines for like the council and guidelines for the visitors attending the meeting, if you had any input or anything or?
I've been on vacation, so I haven't had that.
Okay.
Well, you were at last month's meeting and, and I think that she gave you guys all a copy of that. That's what she's talking about.
Oh.
I don't know if you guys had any input or anything on that, I was just trying to.
Well, there's a lot to look at there and if a rule is a rule, but this is not a big city, we're a whole town. If it's a short meeting, we shouldn't race to get out that door as quick as we can. We were elected to take care of town business. This lady here's got something simple that we could fix, we're gonna fix it and move on, be done with it.
Yeah, and that's why she asked to be put on the agenda and we asked her, and that was great that even Shane asked, they asked to be on the agenda so we know what they're wanting.
If, if we were covered up, it'd be different, but, uh, saying, no, you're not on the agenda, we can't take care of it.
I don't think that's what Minnie's trying to do.
No, I'm just trying to keep, I'm just trying to keep everything in order. I'm just trying to keep our meeting going.
Absolutely, it gets out of hand.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do.
And, and you guys do actually have a council's rules of procedure. And I will, I will say they're not being gone by, so I don't know if you guys, Jay, what do they need to do? Like, just have been the whole thing?
Well, if they have, if they've already adopted rules of procedure, then they can follow them. If, uh.
We just need some corrections to it because we're not actually, we just need to look at that and make some corrections to that.
Well, if you wanted to make, yeah, then, then what you would do that is by, by motion. To a man.
I have one question here. It says anybody who wants to speak, the council shall determine at the meeting by majority vote whether to hear them, so.
That's what I'm talking about, they're not being gone by.
In this case, we have to take a majority vote for any of these people to speak?
And that's why either we're gonna like either follow this or we're gonna make changes to.
If they're not on the agenda?
Yes, so we need to like look at the, look at this to follow, that's why I'm asking.
A lot of these council's rules of procedure, and if you guys go onto our website and go to our ordinances, you know how you can pull up all the ordinances we have? Just put council's rules of procedure and you're gonna see some things in there, you're like, gonna be like, ah, we're not doing that. I, I think a lot of these, I don't know if maybe when they were passed, you guys just didn't have any and just adopted Robert's rules. Um, but Robert's rules are something kinda completely different than you guys do. Wouldn't you agree?
Yeah, and, and I would think that Robert's rules are not appropriate here.
It's strict, so.
Mary, Mary always said all along that we never adopted Robert's rules.
No, I don't think we did, I, I've never seen anything that though.
This is what is in our ordinance. This, if you go online, this is where this was pulled off of.
That's why I said we need to adjust this.
Right, so.
So that's my comment.
It might be, it might be just needing Jay to just do a whole new ordinance.
Yeah, so we can pass it just to be fair, you know, like it's, yeah.
And then whenever you submit more things to American Legal Publishing, you can submit our new. Yeah, American Legal Publishing, um, we only send them in every, every year to eighteen months because they're very expensive to update our code books, but anything that is passed between the times that they're updated is published on our website. So people can find the new ordinances there and the coded ones.
I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna ask people if you have anything that you look through this and you see a change or you have an idea, you might wanna either send things to me or send things to Jay 'cause I will probably send some comments to Jay on my end, so. But, just to get your input on it, but. And, um, I don't have anything further on that, I was just gonna touch base on that real quick, so. Anybody else in the council have anything before I close the meeting? Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you guys.
Seven fifty-eight, record guys, record. Oh, they can say, of course, we're first.
Anything different yet?
He's our supervisor. Yeah, he can help you out.